So the, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
Standing in the way of celebrating, so. Um, okay, so we'll call to order the, uh, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty Springbrough Board of Education meeting. Roll call?
Stukey?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Bab?
Here.
Balajé?
Here.
Goods?
Here.
Okay, uh, item one point one, we'll stand for the pledge.
Okay, so hold on a second. I've got a flag here somewhere.
Oh, you've got a flag. Okay, great.
I don't, I don't know, we're gonna see, I gotta find it on my, uh.
Share it on the screen?
Yeah, although it's the only one I can't see.
I forgot mine at the off.
Oh, there we go, Scott got it.
Uh, Scott have it, good job, Scott.
Good job.
All right, ready?
Right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball.
Play ball.
Thanks, Scott.
Scott came back time to give it a little more action.
Get some more in there. Place mat.
Oh, well, I'm glad, glad you had that. Uh, so we'll move to item one point two, adoption of the agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Okay, um, Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balajé?
Yes.
Goods?
Yes.
Okay, item one point three, approval of the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions?
Okay, um, Stukey?
Yep.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balajé?
Yes.
Goods?
Yes.
Okay, uh, two point one, the Springbrough Education Association Report, I don't believe we have anybody on in the FCA, no? Okay, then we move to item two point two, the Springbrough Classified Employees Association Report, I think we have anybody from the FCA with us? Okay, item two point three, uh, pre-arranged public participation, I do not believe that we had anybody pre-arranged to speak, so we can move to two point four, uh, public participation, um, is there any, anybody on the phone that would like to, uh, participate on any, or make any comments about any agenda items tonight? Okay, Tara, then I think we can move to item three point one, the approval of the five-year forecast, the May update.
Yep, that's all I have, approval of the five-year forecast, May update, um, with those few changes that I had sent to you guys. Um, one of them was, we have for health insurance modeled, and it came in at seven and a half, and I did explain that in my presentation, but I actually adjusted the forecast for that, and then a couple tweaks, um, for negotiations that we have made, and so it's a present. Documents are uploaded on the board backs.
Okay, is there a motion to approve item three point one?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion or questions?
So let me just restate, and I apologize, I have to ask about this again, but to make sure I understand this. What's in there right now has what already been cut with the one point two million or whatever, and that was around seven percent, and then we're estimating an additional potential three percent that what we are estimating might come in the future is?
It's pretty close, um, so we have just under one point three million that we received for fiscal twenty, so that's happening now before close, so that's in the forecast. And then for next year, I have a total of ten percent, so it's an additional about two percent on top of what we already received this year, so for a total of about ten percent. I mean, right now, I mean, I have a survey that, you know, a bunch of treasurers, um, all over the state submitted, what are you doing, what are you, you know, what is your feedback? And we have some who aren't doing anything, and we're gonna wait to see whatever the governor, um, hands down, and then just adjust their forecast at that time, so that's always a possibility for people to do. Some are doing, a lot of people are doing ten percent, when I went through, there was, I don't know, a hundred and fifty responses, the majority of people were just doing a total of ten percent. Uh, the problem I think we're gonna have is that depending on whatever they come forward with, I don't know if they're gonna give everybody the same, same, the board percentage decrease, or if they're gonna do it how they did this time, where they can make the comment that, oh, well, it was on average a three point seven percent decrease. Yeah, but then there's people like us who are decreasing point one percent, so it's just so hard, some people have twice what they received before, some people have three times what they received before, and that's a little bit easier to model too, if you're, you were cut two percent, or, you know, two and a half percent. If you're cut eight point one, and you multiply that by three times, we're looking at a twenty-four percent, four million dollar cut, I mean, so hopefully, you know, it's just right now, it's a complete guessing game, until the numbers from the state come in to see how we're doing, how the economy is bouncing back. Um, you know, we've heard anything where, anything from they'll do an across-the-board cut, to they might do cuts by quarter, depending on if the, if the economy's, you know, coming back around, they might not need to cut for the whole year. So right now, it's just our best guess at the time is a ten percent, which with that, plus the casino revenue I have, which is about a fifty percent decrease from, um, our, what we currently receive, um, so it's about one point seven and some change. Um, and then obviously, you know, I'll keep communicating as soon as we know a little bit more from the state on what they're looking at, I mean, we even have a Zoom meeting tomorrow on this, where the, the budget management, we'll see if they have any guidance, or if they're hearing any scuttle. But alls we can do pretty much is just communicate out that it could be more of a, a reduction, it could be less, and we just need to be very careful on how we're operating, so if we do receive a, a cut that is more significant than, you know, we're anticipating, then we'll have some things in place, hopefully, to be able to, um, you know, alter what we're doing in terms of to kind of help us get through, but, um, it's just right now, it's kind of, it's really, you never want to be a treasurer and say you have to make a guess, but unfortunately, we just don't have any concrete data that's gonna help us make any decisions.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and are, is the state giving us any, um, guide, guidance around when they anticipate when the next cut or whatever is going to come?
We're thinking sometime in June, um, they have, our first, um, foundation payments come in July, that doesn't mean anything because they've never cut before, I mean, this is my twenty-first year, I have never seen a reduction mid-year be made, ever. So I think we're all entering in a phase where we've never been before, so I, I can't say anymore, well, they're not gonna make a cut after the school year starts, because they did it this year, and you just never could have seen that coming, so I think alls we can plan for now is hopefully we'll know something in June of kind of the direction they're going, based off of May numbers, so I know right now, the latest guidance I've heard, and Les Carey's heard something in addition, the latest guidance I've heard is, hey, we're gonna look at what May numbers look like, and how all of that turned out in May, and hopefully that will give us a better picture of what we need to at least start the school year, July payments coming, what that may look like, but honestly, they can wait all the way up till June thirtieth to let us know. And even then, they can start with something and make changes as they go, so it's.
And then as we figure out what school is gonna look like in the fall, those components, so we might end up July, like, I know that we've gotta turn it in in May and October, but, but if it looks completely different, we get another big chunk cut in June, and then the fall needs to look totally different, then we just come back in July, we don't submit anything different, we just make our changes, and then do we resubmit it, or do we just make the changes and resubmit in October?
Yes, the, the board can at any time resubmit a new forecast, you're just required by statute to do it twice, anytime there's a major change, if there was a levy failure or a passage, and you want it, I mean, anytime the board wants to approve another forecast, we can and submit it, so, and it'll just supersede whatever the previous one was. So yes, we could absolutely do that if we find that there's a big change from, from what we submit, um, and we absolutely can do another one at any time.
But even if we don't end up submitting it, I mean, we don't, we can still internally adjust the budget at any point in time, I mean, just because we've submitted something doesn't mean we have to adhere to that, it's just that we are required to turn it into the state, so I mean, we don't necessarily have to take that step where we resubmit, we can, but that doesn't prevent us from changing internally how we're operating if there is new information.
Right, and that's what typically happens, to be honest, I mean, we submit something in October, and then the board makes decisions, and if they make a decision and approve something that's outside of that forecast, then I kind of collect all of that data, and then when I go to do the May update, like this past time, you'll see all of the changes that have occurred since October.
Cause there's really no need, to Jamie's point, of re-submitting it to the state, we can just do everything in turn, there's nothing, there's no legal obligation or whatever, we can just, obviously, we would need to, if there were those big of changes, we would need to be changing internally, we do that, and then just submit that in October.
Yes, the only reason we would ever want to submit an alternate forecast outside of those periods is if this year or the next fiscal year, you're gonna be negative, and you know you're gonna be negative, didn't know you were gonna be negative at one time, and that, you know, you realize at some point during the year, because then you're required to submit a plan to ODE, um, into the state auditor's office, so obviously, a sudden we were cut, you know, ten million dollars, then yes, we would be required to submit another forecast, because we would end up with a negative um, in the next fiscal year, so I just, I don't even wanna breathe on that one, cause I can't imagine that occurring, but, you know, it's seem crazy.
Let's hope not.
Yeah, okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, cause I know we talked about this in the last one, so it's, but it's about three million dollars when you put it all together, um, you know, but I think, and I think that you've effectively been able to mitigate that, given the cost containment work that was already in process, um, prior to the learning of these, uh, the reduction, and so while unfortunate, uh, that, you know, we had sort of planned on that cost containment work, you know, buying us, uh, uh, maybe a little bit more time, you know, before we have to have a conversation with the community about future funding levels, um, you know, good news is that we were, uh, not adversely affected, uh, because you guys had already sort of done that work, and so we were able to sort of weather the, uh, the cuts that we got from the state, so.
That's correct.
Any other questions or discussion?
I've got, I've got one question, and Tara, I apologize, you may have answered this in any.
Well, you're okay.
What's the assumption for the, um, health insurance in the out years, in terms of the, the year-over-year increase?
Have about ten percent, so, um, it's just, like, as example, we're at seven and a half percent, so then it makes it look better, cause then they, you start the next year with that new, those new premium amounts, and then you add your ten percent on top of that, so when you.
Maybe to rephrase it differently, you, you didn't change that from the last forecast?
No, just, I just changed the one year.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. I'm hoping it doesn't, it doesn't hit us worse on a year that, you know.
That's kind of my concern, is we get a bounce back year, we're.
Right.
It goes well above that, okay.
This question, oops, I think he's getting pulled away by a kid, this question might be more for Rob, but maybe you can answer. So with thinking through what is coming over this next year with, um, COVID nineteen, do you anticipate a lot more, um, expense, whatever school looks like, just in preparation for our building's safety, with the cleaning processes, and, um, whatever level of masks and the cleaning, just all of that stuff, like, did we have to increase, um, that budget line item in order to prepare for that for the future, or are we just adjusting what's already in that budget and ordering differently?
You wanna take that, Rob?
Sure, I mean, I would love to have more money, but we just don't have it to, to take, so, uh, yeah, I mean, I'm, we're just gonna adjust what we have, um, I do anticipate there being enough cost, um, do, in fact, we need to get, it just depends if we're going to be providing face masks, if it's gonna be, you know, students that are providing face masks, uh, for themselves, I, I, we don't know what that looks like, so I guess right now, what I've got is what I've got, and we will just modify to, to fit within, um, what we have. I guess the fallout would be projects that I have, um, on the, the slate for this year, this, this coming year, um, we do have a, um, another bleacher project that we wanted to do, I do have some money in asphalt that maybe I could tap into, so it, it's Rob and Peter to pay Paul.
Have we had difficulty in acquiring, cause I know, like, with our early childhood program stuff, there's been some difficulty in acquiring some of the items, that been, or are we far enough ahead with thinking ahead three months that we're gonna be able to be ready to go for the fall?
Yeah, surprisingly, we, we got in right on time, uh, once things started to fall off the table, we had already had orders placed, we're, we're good on hand sanitizer, um, we, uh, just secured twenty thousand masks, um, with an additional twenty thousand cloth masks. Um, so, you know, we're, we're in pretty good shape, definitely through the summer, and, you know, as things start opening up, and we find good deals, then we'll go ahead and procure some stuff, you know, that, that won't spoil over time.
Yeah, great, great, okay, super, thank you, that's all that I had, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on item three point one?
Okay, um, Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balajé?
Yes.
Goods?
Yes.
Stukey?
I'm staying.
Okay. And we move into item four point one, the personnel report, Ms. Hester?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, I present to you item four point one, the May twenty-seventh, um, personnel report. Lots of activity at five points, but I think Tracy, we've got all your spots filled after retirements and resignations. Good, it looks like you've got a good crew, um, we did have, um, Tracy had selected Erin, but I believe she then acquired a position at her children's private school and rescinded her, um, her acceptance of the job, yeah, so that's why it says rescinded on there.
Yes.
Okay, um, so item four point one, uh, is the approval of the personnel report, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Need discussion or questions?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balajé?
Yes.
Goods?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Okay. So we will now move into, uh, section five, board member reports, comments, questions, announcements, and future considerations. So we have two items, uh, that we are looking to approve, um, and just, you know, before we get into that, um, you know, I guess I would maybe just use this to the time, uh, you can see that we are, uh, looking to give Ms. Hester, uh, an administrative contract, uh, I'm sure everybody saw the announcement, to go back to the role of Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Operations, and for Mr. Robinson to, uh, to go back to the Executive Director of Business and Spillies Operations, and I just wanna extend my thanks to, to both of them for stepping up, uh, to fill those interim roles, I'm sorry that my dog is barking in the background. Kids are not doing a great job of keeping them occupied while I'm on this call. And, but I just wanted to, uh, thank you guys both, um, you know, I know that, uh, neither of you asked to be put into those positions, and to, to step up and sort of have these additional responsibilities thrown your way, uh, and, you know, just wanted to, to extend my thanks, uh, for the fact that you guys were willing to, to step in during those challenging circumstances, and really rose to the occasion, and just, again, wanted to express, uh, my appreciation, I think I speak for the rest of the board, uh, you know, that both of you, uh, really, uh, done, done a great job, and, uh, really, we want to just extend our thanks, so. So I guess the first one, uh, is item five point one, the approval of the administrative contract for Rob Robinson, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We all just got executive.
Any, uh, questions, discussion?
Okay, um, Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balajé?
Yes.
Goods?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Okay, um, item five point two, the approval of the administrative contract, uh, for Ms. Hester as the Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Operations, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Okay, um, Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balajé?
Yes.
Goods?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, uh, we'll now go to announcements and future considerations, and I always forget the order, I'm sorry.
I'm last, I mean, I'm first.
You're first?
At the end of the table.
I, I can't remember, it's been so long.
So I will start with just thanking Tara and Carrie for their leadership with the five-year forecast and, and cost containment in preparation for that, because that this COVID nineteen thing was gonna happen, and when we reviewed that five-year forecast, and to look at where we already, I mean, where we landed, but where it would have been, had we not had the cost containment and all of that money saved moving forward, that is just huge, so thank you guys for that, and Tara for your preparation of, and work towards this, because it's not a pretty picture, there's fun about this, but, um, you've done a great job of pulling that together for us, um. Graduation, um, I've been able to be a part of a couple of graduates that asked me to present their diploma, and it was just, you know, what a unusual year for our seniors, our graduates, but they have just hit it out of the ballpark up there at the high school with those individual presentations of the diplomas, and the families are just, the feedback from the families are just so positive and appreciative of this, of the extra time that the district has taken to make it so personal, and, um, I was just talking to a grandmother right before the meeting, and she said, this, it, this just almost feels better, because it's so personal, yet we time with everybody, and the district has just gone above and beyond, so kudos to the whole administrative team up at the high school, and everybody else that has helped out, because I just really think that, you know, I think it's like eleven to eight Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then four to eight on Friday, I mean, the amount of time and teachers that are rotating through reading names for an hour at a time, it is a huge orchestration, but they have it down to the science and socially distancing people, and they've just done an absolutely outstanding job, so, um, a huge amount of appreciation for that. And then to Rob, you've just done an outstanding job of, in your role, I love to see, even when it's small amounts of dollars that we're saving, you know, you've done it with the cell phones, and with just different things, and digging down into how we're spending our dollars, and I know that some of that is with our, you know, what, how we've saved money with our cost containment, so I appreciate what you've done in your current role, and the role that your executive director, whatever it is that your role is now, just, I appreciate what you brought into the district, it was a different type of role than what you came, but, um, you've done an outstanding job with just helping us pull some things together to save some, some money, and like, like we've said with both you and Carrie, you know, we just kind of needed you in those roles right then, and you've done a great job with that. And the same thing, I know I couldn't, I could have known, but it wouldn't have been effective to say no to Carrie, you can't leave this position, but same thing with you, you've done an outstanding job during just some really, really difficult days, um, in leading our district through times that, once again, you didn't apply for this role, we asked you to help us during a difficult time, and ever thought we would have been faced with so many difficult situations, and you have just let it with such grace and confidence, and the families that have worked with you, have had the blessing to work with you, they have just, the feedback has been absolutely phenomenal, because they know that you care about them specifically, and you represent Springbrough so well. So we're thrilled that you're staying with us, and you're gonna help us, lead us to, lead us to that next step, so thank you for you're in this role that you've had, because you were exactly what we needed during this time, so, that's it. Thanks, it's Charles next, Jamie?
Good, cause I was gonna guess.
I never have anything to say after Lisa gets done, she covers everything. But.
I always have lots of words.
I just be ditto on everything Lisa said, and, uh, so who's gonna tell Kyle that we wanna do it this way every year?
Well, we can do the processional, the new parade, but.
Thanks, thanks to everybody who put that together, I know there's a lot of people, and it sounds like it was great even from the, the chat comments, so, um, so kudos to everybody, that's all.
I'm next, right?
You're next, Dave.
First question, Teresh, could I have voted on the, the five-year?
Technically no, because we have athletics are paid out of the general fund now.
They did the right thing, then, okay, I was just.
Good job.
Just kind of guessing there.
You're used to it, if it's me, you say no.
Wanted to say thanks to anybody that had to do anything with graduation, at first, when we came out with all this, there was a lot of negativity, uh, but I haven't heard anything other than positive things, uh, you know, since we started it, so, uh, great job there, Carrie, thanks again for stepping in and helping us, and, uh, you know, through difficult times, and, you know, we're not out of those yet, but, uh, um, you know, we'll, uh, we'll make it though, and then Rob, uh, you better keep the edutcare and sanitation stuff over there, because that's gonna be a.
Absolutely.
What a cluster, I mean, it's just, you know, that, all sports are starting to open up, and, um, especially for football, just unbelievable what we're gonna have to go through to, to make it work, so, um, I've been talking with Ryan and Austin about what I do with my kids, so, thanks, and, you know, keep doing the good work, that's all I have.
You're good?
Yep, so again, thank, thank you, Carrie, um, you know, I, I appreciate not only the time you invested, um, you know, during your, your interim role, but also, um, your honesty and openness when you realized it wasn't for you, cause I mean, I, you know, again, I think that helps us, um, but again, you did a fantastic job, and, you know, we appreciated your, your leadership throughout, um, and certainly glad that you're gonna be here with us, you know, continuing on. Um, again, I, I saw pieces, parts of the parade, I know it went all the way down to, I think the K was where it finally let off, so it was, uh, pretty impressive, um, and again, I could certainly see that extending past this year, again, it was pretty sweet, um, Jack loved it, he was with me when we were kind of driving down the opposite direction of waving at everybody, so that was fun, um, but again, I think, you know, we made the best of a bad situation with graduation, and, um, it, it turned out, I think, better than anyone could have expected, and kudos to, to all the administration and staff that not only helped, but are continuing to help with it, I think, you know, like Ms. Bab said, it made it special for each and every person, which was, I think, what we wanted to do, especially given, you know, the fact that those kids missed prom and the normal gradu, I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's shocking still to me that, that so much got cut out of their senior year, but again, thanks for everyone making the effort to, uh, make it special still, and, um, you know, hopefully, hopefully next year we'll be back to, to normal somewhat, but I hope, uh, one enjoys their official start to summer, um, certainly earned it. And again, you know, thanks to everybody, keep up the great work, and, um, you know, we're here to support you, so thanks.
Thank you, um, yeah, I would echo what everybody has said, um, really enjoyed being a part of the processional, uh, and hope that is something maybe we can continue to do in future years, I actually thought that was really, really fun experience, and, uh, aside from the sunburn, I'll wear a hat next time, um, but it was really, it was, uh, it was, it was a good time, and, uh, and again, yeah, just extend my thanks to everybody who has really gone out of their way to, uh, to make the best of a, of a difficult and challenging situation for our graduates, and it's just another example, we, we've talked about it time and again, just where, you know, we have people that are willing to always go above and beyond, and, uh, it really speaks volumes about, uh, their character and their commitment to doing what's best for our kids, and so just, again, thank you to everybody who's been involved and put in the extra time, and, and again, made the best of a, of a bad situation, and, um, uh, again, I know we've talked about it before we voted, but, uh, but thank you again to Carrie and Rob, I just would echo what everybody has said, and again, you guys have, uh, really stepped up, and, uh, we're, we're so fortunate to have both you as members of our, of our leadership team as we move forward, and, uh, and again, just appreciate both you serving, uh, admirably during, uh, during difficult circumstances, uh, as, as our interim, in those interim roles, so we really, really appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements or future considerations, Ms. Hester, Ms. Floyd?
No, I don't have anything. No, I don't have anything.
No, just so everybody knows that now that school is quieting down just a few more days of the diploma, given the diplomas, then we will come together to really try to wrap our minds around as best as we can because daily we get new guidance or recommendations or guidelines or mandates. It depends on what word they want to use. But we will start to truly figure out what it's going to look like in August for Springbrow. And so we will be updating as we have a better plan.
And to your point, Carrie, I appreciate that she has sent on a couple of other states even that we're looking at because, and I was reading over some of what she sent. And there were things that I would never, ever have, it would never have come to my head to even consider. And so I'm encouraged that we're looking at all different options of, you know, let's get all of the brains together that are all dealing with this and consider what, what is going to be the best way to educate all kids at all ages and all abilities and as we're going through this. So, you know, at first you think, okay, we've got to solve this. But really solving that sometime is putting all the collective brains together. And it might be outside of just Springbrow. So I appreciate that you shared with us some of these outside resources because as I was looking through it, I thought, gosh, I would never even have thought about some of these different approaches. So I am encouraged by just the creativity and outside of the box thinking of what some of the options might be for the fall and that you're also taking parent consideration, your parent, the surveys into consideration, but also noting that there's regulations around that the governor has put in place, that there are some things that we will not have the authority to control. And then there's some things that we are given flexibility. So I think we've got a good blend of how we will be able to approach it.
Any other announcements or future considerations? Okay, we'll move to item 6.1, Executive Session, to consider the appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? I guess I would just add my normal qualifier that everything discussed in the executive session should remain in executive session.
Okay, Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Balaj?
Yes.
Goods?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes and there will be no, no action following the executive session. Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Take care.